Please remain standing for the fair and pledge to the flag.
I'll run this meeting door, and I'll now turn it over to Mr. Ron Lee to take care of our prior invocation and pledge.
Thank you. Good Chairman, I'm glad to see Christie here tonight. She had asked me to fill in for her in case she didn't make it. And at this time, I'd like to ask my friend and colleague of the 3rd District, Chris Rippey, to lead our invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight first thanking you for sending your son Jesus down across for our behalf, Father. We thank you for this commission. We thank you for the full court, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for every elected official across Moore County. Let us keep you first in mind when we make these decisions, Father. We thank you for all the citizens of this county, Lord. Keep your hedge of safety around this county, our school system. Lord, we live in a time where the world is crazy, but we want to keep Moore County safe, Father. We thank you for every decision that we've made. We pray that you continue to bless every decision that this court makes, Father. Father, we have to come to you in a different realm now. We thank you for Commissioner Ross being here, Father, but we pray that we continue to get a quick healing for her, Lord. We also pray for Commissioner Carleen Brown, Lord. Be with her, Lord. Be with her doctor. Be with her family. Put faith over fear, Father, where she's at, Lord, and that she will come back here soon, Father. We thank you and we ask you. Everybody in agreement? Say amen.
Amen.
At this time, if you would face the flag and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every father for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now ask the clerk to call the roll.
Michael Bell?
Here.
Carl Bolden?
Here.
Carleen Brown? Charles Dodson?
Here.
Randy England?
Here.
Steve Glenn?
Here.
Stephen Hilton? Brad Hillis?
Here.
James Hines?
Here.
Scott Kelly?
Here.
Ron Lee?
Here.
Gary Martin?
Here.
Kenny Moffett?
Here.
Ken Montgomery?
Here.
Casey Owens?
Here.
Gary Prager?
Here.
Chris Rippey?
Here.
Christie Ross?
Here.
Scott Ruble?
Here.
Tommy Savage?
Here.
Donna Smith?
Here.
Phillip Stoudt?
Here.
Cole Taylor?
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Here.
Twenty-two present. We'll move on to the adoption of our docket.
Motion.
A motion, Mr. Bell, taken second by our docket. Got a second from Mr. Hillis.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the docket adding two items. One of these, I would like for it to be item number nine. And this is a life check system. This is a safety feature for the schools. It is grant funding. And then number 10 is simply to extend a contract for the school system for the virtual job shadowing program. And that is grant funding as well, and I so move.
We got a motion there here, second. We got a second from Mr. Glenn. All those in favor of amending the docket adding number nine, life check contract, and the 10, the virtual job shadow contract, say aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously. We'll now move on to approving our docket. All those approving our docket tonight, say aye. All those that approve our docket tonight, say aye. All those opposed. We've now approved our docket for tonight. We will now have anybody that wants to sign up for public comment. You'll go back to Mr. Hillis. He will sign you up. You want to speak tonight, all the gentlemen, it's on the aye, on the agenda. The item's on the agenda. Now we'll move to the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written in dispense of the reading.
Got a motion, Mr. Savage, a second by Mr. Dodson. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move on to our elected official departmental reports, the UT extension quarterly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the county commission. You should have a copy of my report in front of you, or you may have seen it digitally. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those at this time.
We got a motion, Mr. Bolden, a second by Mr. Stoudt. Anybody have any questions? Any no questions? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will like to add that she does a practice job. They really work hard and they do a lot for the four ages.
Sure they've been busy at the fair this week, the successful fair. We'll move on to the EMS department report. Mr. Preston Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the court. If y'all got a copy of her report, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Who would approve? Got a motion, Mr. Ron Lee.
Second.
Second, Mr. Moffett. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dillon? Being done, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. Mr. Jim Cunningham, the EMA report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission have my report. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Move the docket.
We got a motion by Mr. England, a second by Mr. Hillis. Any questions for the EMA's record? Being done, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, thank you, Jim. Passage unanimously. We'll move on to the Warren Campbell Memorial Report, Mr. Jim Dyar.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You have my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Motion by Mr. Bolden, a second by Mr. Hillis. Anybody have any questions?
I do, sir. Mr. Jim, just curious, how's fuel sales going?
Fuel sales for the last quarter were terrific. Part of that reason was we kind of had a sale on the fuel, and also we had MTSU there for a short period of time. It was about two months. While they were fixing the runway in Mercury's Borough, MTSU took their 50 planes and scattered them around middle Tennessee, and we had 10. And we had, I don't know, dozens and dozens of students, and they bought fuel from us. So this particular past quarter had really good fuel sales.
Thanks, sir.
All those in favor of Mr. Dyar's report, say aye. All those opposed, thank you. Now we'll move on to codes enforcement, Mr. Cole Miller.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have my reports. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Got a motion, Mr. Savage, a second by Mr. Moffett. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Miller, over the last couple of months, I've got several, several phone calls about campgrounds coming into the Warren County area. And in particular, the one in Centertown, which is in my district, I had a lot of people call about it. And I've got some people that also live in my district that a few months ago, several years ago, they tried to put a couple trailers on their place and weren't allowed to. Well, and they got a pretty legitimate argument. What is the difference in a single wide trailer compared to a camper coming in and being long-term? Because I know the man that has it out in Centertown, he has it on his side, long-term tenants welcome. And I can't disagree with their argument. They have a pretty good argument. Do you explain to us what the county, what we have the right to do or not do when it comes to the campgrounds?
Absolutely. So it's really not a difference of what's going on. It's a difference of who regulates it. So with the campground specifically, it's regulated by the health department. They have to get a permit. They have to have a business permit, just like anybody else, to run a business, you know. But they have to go through checks with the health department versus a mobile home that's into our building environmental codes. We regulate mobile home parks. The health department regulates actual RV campgrounds. I mean, I've been in conversation with a lot of these here lately, and the biggest difference as far as what we can do, if, I mean, if that's something y'all want to go after, we can make more laws up. I mean, that's from what I've been told. If we want to make them put, you know, fences up to block the view of other citizens, I've been told we can do that kind of thing. But as far as saying you cannot have a campground, we don't have the authority to do that. That's got to come through the health department. And that point of contact's actually Jonathan Dillon.
The one in Centertown behind the school, you cannot see it. You've got to drive completely behind the school before you can even see it. He has met every standard that ever, you know, he's done everything right.
I can't get into, I've had a conversation with this, with the point of contact at the health department. I can't really say what's going on with that, you know, but I do know, I mean, to kind of go with what you're saying, he has went through the health department. There's a few little errors, but they're not like business-related errors. It's more like he didn't renew a permit that, you know, is $10. And when it comes to these RV parks, I really do think that we're going to have a lot more of them, you know. I don't see that slowing down. It's just like anything else in this county. I mean, we're booming. For some reason, people want to come here, you know, but they're not slowing down. So if we need to have further conversation about that, you know, I'm just y'all's enforcer. What y'all want to do, y'all tell me what to enforce, so. But as it stands right now, we have nothing to regulate RV parks.
Personally, I'm not against the campground. I got a camper. I love to camp. I'm not against the campground. I just, I have people call, voice their opinions to me. That's why I'm asking you. And they've just upset because they just said, you know, what's the difference in me putting a couple mobile homes on my place to have a retirement fund compared to having a campground with long-term tenants?
Oh, yeah.
You know, I'm not personally against the campground. Like I said, I love to camp. I'm just, people call and I'm going to do my job and ask questions.
I understand. Like I said, I get these phone calls, and I just redirect them to the health department, and that's the best I can do at the moment.
Well, I know, and I spoke with you already about it, you know, I do know the guy out in Centertown, he had commodes sitting out front.
Now, see, that's a different issue.
He had commo.
It's not he. Does that belong to the guys that own the trailer?
No. No, they were, no, they were his. Because he admitted, did he not tell you they were his?
He told me they were going to get them up. I told him he needs to get them up.
And now he's got, now he had beds out there.
Yeah, and that's an environmental code issue. I mean, we can't allow people to just put junk on the side of the road.
That's the only thing, man. It's in my district. People fuss about it. I'm going to call. I'm just going to find out.
I understand. And that's pretty much what I do for a living now, is fill these phone calls and deal with it, so.
Hey, Cole?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't one, talking about the difference of the two house trailers? And you said you have a camper, right, Cole?
Yeah.
Do you plug your camper into something when you go somewhere?
Yeah.
Those house trailers are a direct line, right? Would that be a difference? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You don't go outside your house trailer that's permanent and unplug it and plug it in. It's direct ends. That'd be a big difference. And also, RV, they have to go under the hotel tax, is that correct?
As far as I'm, the situation has really gotten pretty important all of a sudden in the past two weeks. We've had a lot of phone calls about it. And from my understanding, talking to Terry Bell, you know, they are supposed to be paying the hotel motel tax. But once again, that's not something I enforce, you know. I don't walk up to people's doors and say, are you paying your taxes? You know what I mean?
But they probably are susceptible to that, and that's something that we need to take a look at on if the more come.
Well, like I said, I'm not against campground. Don't take it that the wrong way. I said I camp. I love to camp. But I just, I want to keep it looking like something. That's in my district. I don't want to see commo sitting out beside the road in front of them and stuff like that. People drive by. They don't like to see it. They call, fuss with me. I'm going to ask questions.
They can't drive by and see the ones that bounce their ass school unless they go out.
I'm talking about the commo. They're sitting out in front of those in the back of the school.
All right, let's move on. We've got a motion and a second. Anybody else got any further questions? If not, all those in favor of approving Cole's report, say aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Now we'll move on to industrial development board, Ms. Wendy Sneak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. You should have a copy of my report. I will make a note, there is one change. Our board of directors meeting, as mentioned, has been moved to the second Tuesday of every month. But for October, due to the broadband, Tennessee Kentucky broadband conference and fall break, we have, the board voted to shift our meeting to October 17th for October. So just want to make that note if anybody has any other questions.
Got a motion, Mr. Stoudt, a second by Mr. Glenn. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, so you changed it to the 17th. Is it still going to be the same with the IDB's top executive director? Yes, so I had a meeting with Mr. Stephen Crook, who is the IDB director with Coffey County. And our plan, I actually spoke with him today at governor's conference. The plan right now is he will be attending our meeting on October 17th, and so we will be ascending an invitation. We would love all commissioners who are available to come. But we're going to have him there to speak on the 1,800 acre I-24 industrial property that they are currently looking at prospects for. As they have new prospects come into that property, one of the first questions they are asking is where can their suppliers locate? And so since we do have properties available, Stephen and I are building a really collaborative relationship on helping market each other's properties. So he'll be there to speak on October 17th. At 5:00 PM, yes, sir. Thank you. So I've had questions about them. I have not spoken to them directly. I actually received an email from him today in relation to some workforce development opportunities that we're working on, TCAT and MOLLO. So I'm hoping to build a better relationship and find out more about what they're doing and if there's any, anything we can do to assist there.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously. Thank you, Sneak. We'll now move on to number seven, our financial department report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the court. You have my report. I do my best to answer them at this time.
Motion by Mr. Bolden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Anybody have any questions on the financial report? Being done, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, pass unanimously. We'll move right on into our committee reports. We'll start with budget finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
We'll move on to buildings and grounds.
The only thing the building grounds has to report, they started working on the doors at the mall today, trying to fix those. And we're also waiting on some information on the roof to come back before we have our next meeting. That's all we have to report.
We'll move on to economic and agriculture development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have is Hilda didn't mention they have Customer Appreciation Day, Farmer's Market, September the 23rd, correct? It's what?
It's this Saturday.
It's this Saturday? Okay, this Saturday. Thank you.
We'll move on to education, Mr. Stoudt.
Mr. Chairman, the education has nothing to report at this time.
Financial management at this time has nothing to report. We'll move on to health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I want to mention is next month, health and welfare meeting will be at the future site of our new facility to look at where we're at as far as if we're going to be ready in time for us to break ground, hopefully in November or so. Anyone that wants to see that next month, when you see the meeting notice, we'd be glad to have you. Thank you.
Highway and bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have is we have a meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock at the highway department. Thank you.
Policy and personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, policy and personnel has nothing to report.
The only thing I will report on your policy and personnel, we're hoping to get the clinic open the last week in October still. So we want everybody to be aware of that. Safety committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing is our smart station site for sanitation was open on September 1st. It looks great. Excuse me, if you get a chance to go by and take a look at that, that's going to be real significant what we want to have in that Martian. And we'll be addressing the court next month to try to appropriate some money to get our Martian site to go in.
County correctional partnership, Mr. Eddie Abel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today in the jail, the population's 254. Two oh six males, 48 females, and 17 TDOC. Only thing I got to report is, is the sheriff's department had to, they got to use a mobile command center to fare. I was unable to see it. I spent my time at food booth, but they, that is like one that we have approved that they're going to be buying, pretty close to the one that we're going to be buying from the sheriff. I think it worked out real good, and they was very satisfied with that. I think we got a pretty safe fare. Thank you.
Legislative committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
We'll move on to number nine. Did anybody sign up for public comment? So we'll move on to the new business, and the first item on the agenda is elect the chairman of the county commission.
Mr. Chairman. I nominate Terry Bell.
Second. We got a nomination for Terry Bell, a second by Mr. Bolden. Any more nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that nomination ceases.
Second, got a motion, Mr. Ruble, that nomination ceases, a second by Mr. Cole Taylor. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed. Item number two is the appointment of our committee assignments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the assignments list as you present.
Second. Got a second, Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, pass unanimously. Move on to item number three, which is the election of the financial management.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion that we leave financial management to Slayman and elect the vice commissioner.
Motion to appoint all four members that are on there now, again, a second by Mr. Savage. Anybody want to discuss? All right, let's do a roll call over there.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prager?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Phillip Stoudt?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more question?
Number 30 passes 21 to 0. We'll move on to item number four, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another amendment to the SRO grant for the sheriff's department from the state of Tennessee. This would be instituting a line item in order for them to purchase additional equipment out of those grant funds.
Motion for.
Got a motion, a second. Second by Mr. Dodson. Anybody, all those in the process, have any questions? Any no questions? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes. Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone wanna change their vote?
Item number four passes, we'll move on to item number five, Mr. Cobb.
Members' Chair, this is an amendment to the General Fund to allow for the Adult Recovery Court to give raises to, uh, some of the employees who are a hundred percent grant funded. Uh, there was a miscommunication, uh, they thought they were receiving the same raise as the rest of the county, but, uh, due to the restrictions of the grant, that was unable to happen during the budget process, so this is an amendment to rectify this.
Got a motion by Miss, I was cleared, and a second by Miss Christian Ross, anybody have any questions about the amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk Cal Ruff.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone wanna change their vote? Twenty-two yes.
Number five passes twenty-one to zero, we'll move on to item number six, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a transfer within the current mall budget to allow for the full-time maintenance staff to be paid out of that line item and keep the retirement, uh, contributions inside the same line item. Uh, we started the year, we had a part-time maintenance person stationed at the mall, uh, they since left, and it's the wishes of the committees to, um, allow the full-time maintenance staff to work there instead of hiring another part-time employee.
Make that motion.
Say.
We got a motion by, uh, Mr. Bell, and a second by Mr. Rubble, if anybody have any questions about this move? Last clerk, Cal Ruff.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes, sir.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone wanna change their vote? Twenty-two yes.
Number six passes twenty-two to zero, we'll move on to item number seven, Mr. Carl Bolden.
I'd like to make a motion before we start, everyone has this on their desk, we need to change the resolution number to eighteen dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion, a second to change it to eighteen twenty twenty-three, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so that will now be eighteen twenty twenty-three now, if you know what I call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll summarize this, I think everyone's had it on their desk, and had the, it was in the packet, and they had the opportunity to read it. But, uh, it is a resolution to make funds available as a matching contribution to the site development grant offered by the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. Uh, it is a, it is given the IDB, the, uh, authorization to submit an application with appropriate assurance to the state of Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, Office of Community and Rural Development requesting site development grant funds in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars, and Warren County will be responsible for the required local matching funds that cost not to exceed five thousand dollars or the allowable five percent of, uh, whichever may be the lesser amount. And that, uh, County Executive Terry Bell being is hereby designated and appointed as financial officer to perform on behalf of Warren County, those acts and assume such duties as are consistent with said position, and I so move.
Second. Second by Mr. Frager, under discussion, this is a feasibility study on the evil property, if you've got any questions about it, is to see how much it will cost us to get water, sewer, electric, roads, and everything to the evil property, how long that might take to, to get that evil property to where we could use it, and that's what they'll be doing with this, anybody have any more questions about this? Or any comments? Being, uh, last clerk, Cal Ruff.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone wanna change their vote?
Uh, resolution eighteen twenty twenty-three passes twenty-two to zero, we'll move on to the owners, uh, donors is number eight.
This is a list for the donors, Susan Beatty, Aniston Chisel, Brenda Rivera's, Niyeli A. Rangel, Travis Martin, Andrea Richards, Tammy M. Stoner, Melanie Stinson, Sarah Arnold, Mitzi G. Law, Stefana Gay, and Cindy King.
Motion to approve, motion by Mr. Staff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moffitt, all those in favor of approving the donors, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass as you may. We'll move on to item number nine, the life check contract for the schools, Mr. Rubble.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I could explain this in layman's terms, but I think Director Wallace could, uh, give you a little more information on that.
Okay, feel's come on.
Wouldn't plan on having to talk, uh, this contract is for a product that actually started, uh, in jails, uh, in Tennessee. And what it is, is a tag that will be placed on the exterior doors of our buildings, and we will have a schedule that's set to where our SROs go around, when they check doors, the, uh, their device will register that that door has been checked. And so, if the door is not checked, we will receive an email saying that that door has not been checked, so this is just an extra level of safety for us. We're gonna pay for this out of our, uh, safety grant, so it will be grant funded, uh, and it's coming to you for permission or approval, simply because we're gonna pay for that upfront out of that safety grant.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Wilcher, and a second by Miss Owens, anybody have any more questions? Being none, I'll ask clerk Cal Ruff.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone wanna change their vote? Twenty-two yes.
Number nine passes twenty-two to zero, item number ten, virtual job shadowing contract, Mr. Rubble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a contract between, uh, Pathful Incorporated and the Warren County School System, and what this does is extend their virtual job shadowing for an additional four years, and this is also grant funding, and I so move.
Got a motion, now a second by Mr. Stevie Blynn, anybody have any questions about the contract? Being none, I'll ask clerk Cal Ruff.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Ken Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rubble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone wanna change their vote? Twenty-two yes.
Item number ten passes twenty-two to zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, uh, we have a VSO quarterly report.
I was just fixing to tell you.
Alright.
That's, that's where I was going, it's, this is new, we've not been having our veteran service officer come give a quarterly report, and it's not been on our agenda, but I'm gonna ask her to come forward. And I apologize, Mark, that we didn't have it in the right place, but we're still gonna get.
Hey, I think it's on me, I got it to you a little late, you guys have the, uh, VSO quarterly report, just a couple of notes of, of importance, uh, we have increased by forty-three veterans this past quarter in our system, and we've, we've done a ninety-nine, increase in ninety-nine of the forms that we have filed on their behalf, but made a couple of home visits, uh, and we've been very busy, but it's good. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Motion to approve, we got a motion by Mr. Bell, and a second by Mr. Anglin, anybody have any questions tomorrow, they're doing a good job for our veterans, having two veteran service officers. All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to special presentation. Thought Mr. Harriman would be here tonight to do the County White Proclamation from the Office of Veteran Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September twenty twenty-three. Where, whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than one thousand one hundred lives in, in Tennessee each year, and estimated twenty-five attempted suicides for each suicide death. And whereas suicide is the eleventh leading cause of death in Tennessee, the third leading cause of death among young and younger adults aged of ten to twenty-four, as well as the second leading cause of death of adults ages thirty-five to forty-four, and the sixth leading cause of death for adults ages forty-five to fifty-four. And whereas more than three lives a day are lost to suicide in Tennessee, which means we lost twenty-one Tennesseans each week and ninety-seven people per month. And whereas Tennessee veterans, active duty military, and National Guardsmen face a disproportionate risk at, compared to the general population, with more dying from suicide than combat. And whereas public awareness of this tragic problem is the key to prevent further suffering and loss of life, and the risk of human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment, as the high, highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who died by suicide or those who have attempted suicide. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by the governor, and the Tennessee Legislature has decided, has declared Tennessee Suicide Prevention as a state priority in partnership with Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network to implement, implement the Tennessee Strategic for Suicide Prevention Plan. Whereas Tennessee is a national leader in the effort to prevent suicide, being one of the first states to develop a suicide prevention and evaluation plan covering the lifespan, and whereas nine hundred ninety-eight suicide and crisis lifeline provides twenty-four seven free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources for you or your loved ones, the best, and the best practice for professionals in the United States. And whereas the governor of Tennessee has appointed a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategic for Suicide Prevention. And whereas Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and eliminate, reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas each member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need occasional reminder that we all are silently fighting our own battles. And whereas we encourage all Tennesseans to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and to know genuine advance their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or aho can go a long ways towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. And now therefore, Terry Bell, Warren County Executive, do hereby proclaim, September twenty twenty-three as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Warren County, Tennessee, and do encourage all citizens to work to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and tolerate, tolerance around all people affected by this tragedy. So that was given to me by Brian Harriman of Chairmanial Health. We'll now move on to, uh, Ms. Lana Hillis has something she would like to present to the County Commission, she'll come forward. You, we put you on the spot.
Put me on the spot. Um, last week, of course, we had Senior Day at the fair, and, uh, we had, uh, had a great day, we had over four hundred seniors in attendance that day, and we fed three hundred and sixty, we had nineteen vendors, it's a great day. But, uh, we had some special guests, of course, um, we had sent out an invite just to, uh, let you guys know, what we wanted to do is present you guys, um, with a thank you from our members for all the years and the support that you guys do. Um, we presented one to Tennessee Commission on Aging and Disability, uh, the Upper Comme Development District, the City of McMemville, and of course, Warren County Government. So this is just a small token from our members that they wanted to sign and give to you guys as saying thank you for all your support and your funding to our center.
When we adjourn here, if everybody would get together, we're gonna get a picture made with Lana presenting that, we appreciate what you're doing for our seniors.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any more announcements? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Cole Taylor, and a second by Mr. Dodson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.